I don't have a gavel, so you have to listen to my hands. My name's Lee Willan and I'm the Chair of the School Committee here. I want to welcome everybody tonight. Very unique and unusual kind of a cornucopia of people here today. We've never had seats three deep with people's names and where they're from on them. At least my recollection of 15 years, so I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. Since I will have my back to the crowd, so this is me. I will turn this over to Superintendent Marshall and let her start the show.
Michelle, I know, nice talk. This is Michelle Griffin from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. She was sort of responsible for looking at partnerships and regional schools and collaboratives and so forth. So she is here representing the department.
You can't hear me?
Right. Representing the department tonight, you can potentially answer questions and provide information that would be helpful to the Assembly. I want to thank everyone for being here this evening and for taking time out if I know what it is a busy schedule. I know that some of you have a meeting following the opportunity to be here or...
Yeah, we do.
We do as well, but others do as well. So we're going to move right along. We have an interesting group of folks here this evening that have a lot of good information for us. We are an interesting group of people for them as well, since we have some interesting information for them about schools, about funding, about partnerships in schools, about regionalization, and about other things that are happening in the schools, declining enrollment, especially in the central and western part of the state, which seems to be something that certainly the Executive Director from Regional Planning will say too, is going to continue through 2030. So that being said, I'd like to take the opportunity to have each of the individuals here with us tonight as our guests to introduce themselves, just tell us a little bit about the district you represent and so forth, because different folks here represent different school districts. You will probably see some people, you know, coming in the building just a little late because it's a... You always think getting here is quicker than it is. I think probably finding a parking space is a little more of a challenge than usual. So if we could start with you, Michelle, and why don't we start with you, Steve? You represent the Mass Association of Regional Schools this evening.
I'm Steve Hemmard. I'm the Assistant Executive Director of Mass Association of Regional Schools, formerly Superintendent Derek McFatton, and formerly the Executive Director and changed position. So I also admire, we've been going around to different areas of the state and talking with different organizations that are doing decline in enrollment. We've got the Berkshires, we've got the Central with Mike Bonn and Connie working on rural schools, so it's not just isolated here. It's a real state issue.
My name's Michelle Griffin.
You have to be loud, I guess, because I...
Sorry, I'll be loud. Michelle Griffin, I work in the Department of Education or Elementary and Secondary Education's Office of Regional Governance. We handle work with collaboratives, largely with collaboratives until now. I've recently started working more with regional school districts. So if you stand up and answer questions, I will. They have to bring some back to the department, but that's okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janet Pierce. I'm the Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We're located in Worcester. We serve the city of Worcester and thirty towns surrounding Hades, including the town of Barry.
Donnie Bertham, fifth district, and I represent, I have the five school systems. I have a Quavon, Ware, Quaybuck, North Brookfield, and Spencer East Room.
Anne Goby, State Senator. I have twenty-eight towns in my Senate District. It's eleven regional school districts, five standalone schools, as well as students go to four different Volk's schools in that. Had a good relationship with Steve Hemmard, who had been the Director for the Mass Association of Regional Schools. And I want to thank Representative Ferguson. She and I did, are the co-chairs of Regional School Committees.
I'm Todd Smollett, State Representative, first Hamden District. I'm also the ranking member of the Committee on Ways and Means. I have a number of schools in my district, including Pathfinder, Tantascwa, Quaybuck Regional, Ware Public Schools, and Palmer Public Schools.
Good evening. Kim Ferguson, first Worcester District, Olden Princeton, Paxton, Rutland, Sterling, Westminster. I share Westminster with Rep. Lotnick and Sterling with Rep. Notton. Also serve on Ways and Means, Education Committee, I lead children's families and persons with disabilities. And Steve, as soon as I heard your voice, I freaked right out. I remember that laugh from the past. Nice to see you. And I'm glad we're good tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Hall. I'm the District Director for Senator Jen Flanagan from the Western Middlesex District. The Senator is traveling right now at a conference in DC, so I am here in person.
We'll try really hard to keep our voices loud enough so people can hear. I guess what we would like to do is to hear from this panel about public education, funding, about what's happening to the Foundation Study Committee recommendations, and to explain to school districts where there's declining enrollment, is there really any money in the Foundation Commission's recommendations that will ever end up in almost any one of these school districts because of the hell harmless situation that most of us are in due to declining enrollments? Also, we would love to have a conversation about underfunded and not funded at all mandates that are visited upon the schools. For example, if you say, "Let's do bullying," it seems like it's an easy task, but it costs us money and time and professional development. And you know, you've heard so many times, "Me whine." I know you all have. And so I guess we would like to just hear from each of you as to some of the ideas, opportunities you think there are for us, things that we could do to be more cost-effective, to work together more. We're very parochial. I certainly understand that, and we need to get off of the dime as well. So we look to you to give us some insights as to where you think the FY18 budget's going to be. What about nine-C cuts? We worry about Chapter 70. We worry about Chapter 71. We worry desperately about what's happening in the west and the far western part of the state where declining enrollment. Mr. Bonn and Connie, I'm hoping is going to be here, is really a head, right now, of the Rural Schools Coalition, where there is significant decline in enrollments, which leaves some schools with only ninety children in them, and they're too new to close. It's a very troubling situation there, but that troubling situation is getting closer and closer and closer to Hampshire and Worcester County. So I guess I would leave this to you, Senator, to decide how we should hear from your colleagues.
Okay. So I can do a little bit of a general overview. Since Representative Ferguson, Kim, who's on the Foundation Review Commission, I'm going to let her speak to some of those things.
I think you... Yeah, no problem. We can just leave it at that. Happy to do that. Couple of things. First of all, about a, just a few weeks ago, Kim and I were with some other folks in the room. We were over at Wachusett and had a similar sort of discussion. That was before the election, and a lot of the talk had to do with what was going to happen with Question Two. For those of us, myself and I think a few other members, at least of the legislature that are here tonight, we were dead set against, and we were very vocal on I know on two. And I was extremely happy to see that not pass. And I think that that, as much as anything, should be a signal to our governor that more money has to be put into public education. The governor had made, and this isn't to throw the governor under the bus or anything, but he made the commitment the last two years that he would put more into schools. When his budget came out the last two years, he wasn't able to do it. So you can take from that whatever you want. That either the revenues aren't there, or that other priorities need to be placed on where the money went for education. Going into this next year, we still don't have a list of what nine-C cuts may be, if they will come or not. In fact, I don't have a meeting with J. Ash, Secretary Ash, until December 7th, where to discuss some of the nine-C cuts. Two days ago, for people who are going to do for early retirement, because there was another early retirement incentive that the administration was hoping to garner, I think about $23 million, $25 million. That hasn't been released yet. Who's picked up on that? If enough people did take up to fill some of that gap? Also, in December, December 5th, it will be when everyone meets to come up with a consensus revenue figure, to figure out what we're going to be using for monies going into the next fiscal year. So as far as, there's a lot of uncertainty, let's put it like that. In addition to that, we just had an election. There's uncertainty going forward, what's going to happen on the federal level with what's going to be the focus on education. One thing that I will, what I think is, it's going to be left to us, that I think the states are going to have to pick up a lot more, and we'll see what happens. But I think going forward, I think it's very safe to say that we need to see what we can do within. And I want to thank Dr. Marshall, because she has been on the forefront of looking at things that can be done with our regional schools, and taking a look and working with the Mass Association of Regional Schools Group, what can be done to make sure that we're using what funds are there wisely. The other thing that I will tell you, on Monday, we had a meeting with the Senate. Senator Rosenberg has made it very clear that he wants to see more funding for education. In fact, in the last legislative, this last legislative session, even though it hadn't quite ended yet in December, but we passed in the Senate, we passed what's called the RISE Act. And the idea behind the RISE Act at that time when it came out, it was to kind of balance out this question two. That RISE Act would have put more money into public education, it would have allowed charter school expansions in underperforming districts, in those areas that have those wait lists. So it would have raised the cap on those particular school districts, again, mainly the much more urban areas, the Springfields, the Boston, some of those areas. That did, that passed in the Senate, was not taken up in the House. I do expect that we are going to, on the Senate, that we're going to come out with another aggressive look at education. I think that you'll see typically in years past, because the Senate has the last bite of the apple on doing the budget, we always have the benefit of the April revenue numbers, and typically, if more monies are going to be put in, it's put in for Chapter 70. That's where the, that's historically, you can go back and take a look, and that's what has been done. I want to thank Kim again on her work with me on regional school transportation, that the House was able to get it up a little bit, and then I was able to get it up a little bit more for $2 million more over what the governor had appropriated. So we are making some incremental changes. I do think, again, I mean, you hear it every year that the budgets are, and there's a lot of uncertainty. We don't know. We don't know. We're not going to have a good idea until those consensus revenue figures come in on December 5th, and we don't know between now and then what's going to happen, if we're going to meet our benchmarks, and if the governor will have to institute some nine-C cuts. Again, some of it's going to depend on how many of these people actually took some of this early retirement. So there is a lot of unknowns. I know that that's not overly helpful for you, but there are a lot of unknowns. Nothing new, nothing new, I don't think.
I think, Anne, we really, we really want people at this table to understand that we are here.
Yes.
And that we are concerned, and that we want to do our part to help. But we also need you to understand that Quavon lost twenty positions last year. I should say, Ash West lost nineteen positions last year. We suspect it's because the towns, we can't just push everything across the table to the towns. Health insurance up, you know, eight percent in some districts, eighteen percent, and Ash West just told me that they have their new quote, you know, will be up eighteen percent. We're changing plan designs. We're changing contribution rates, probably some of the same things that, you know, industry and the private sector has had to do. But there's only so much we can do when some of the children coming to us with social, emotional needs, special education, and how special education for the really extremely expensive placements is funded is just not sufficient anymore with $200,000, $300,000 apiece.
Well, and Kim will probably speak to that, too. They had an oversight hearing last week that talked about some of the sped schools and some of the other district placements. And I think I wrote down a couple of numbers, there's 5,764 students that are at approved sped schools. For residential placements, we've got about 900 students in residential placements, say why. And as you know, one placement can be 100,000 plus 200,000, and obviously, those are some, those are big issues. When you get into some of the unfunded mandates, and I know that that question comes up a lot, and I saw, you know, the nine pages that Desi put out, and not to throw Desi under the bus either, but there are some things that we feel that Desi needs to roll back on. We don't like the idea that when you, you know, we just had a situation, Todd and I just had a situation over at the Quaybuck School System. I was surprised that, I figured Brad would be here, but he's probably sick of talking to the two of us this past week on things. But he had a situation a couple of weeks ago where he was supposed to be doing this whole other evaluation on something that had already done, and it's just another set of paperwork, and paperwork, and paperwork, and paperwork. And I know that the superintendents are under a lot of that. And so we do need to rein some of those things in. And again, to go back to the meeting that, when I spoke with the Senate President on Monday, I made that very clear. And as well as Sonia Chang Diaz, who was the Senate Chair of Education, she was also on agreement, you know, that we need to take a look at some of the things that are being done. And, you know, again, you know your school districts, in my opinion, much better than Mitchell Chester does, Mr. Peiser. You know, you know. You know your districts. You know what you need here. And, you know, there's these ideas that, you know, if you were given X amount of money, and you were told that you have to do all these things, that you could do it, that you could do it with them. Because you know what needs to be done, you know, when it comes to evaluating your teachers and the things that have to be done to make your school district strong, you know it, your school districts know it. You have very active school committees. You know your kids. You know your kids. So I think that, I think you're going to see some pushback coming up into this next legislative session on some of those things. I think it's time, and especially with, after what we saw what happened with Question Two. I mean, it was resounding, you know? Not that the charter school is not going to go away, we have charter schools. Maybe there'll be more of a push the horse man charter schools. I don't know, you know? But there will be things that will happen coming up in this legislative session, and a lot of moving parts coming up. So I don't want to take all the time. I don't know, Kim, did you want to jump on?
Yeah.
It'll probably be easier, too, as we go along, if we don't just...
Yeah.
I think we'd like to keep the questions till after, because otherwise, some of our legislators have to leave because they have another meeting. And so my fear is that if we open it up to questions, we won't be able to accommodate the people who need to be here.
Just a basic question for us budgetary literate, what is million C?
Oh, the governor is able to make, if the, if the revenues don't meet what they're supposed to be at, the governor has the authority to go in to cut administrative, within his offices, within his administration, to cut. So things that he cannot do, he can't touch.
Aggression.
Correct, right. We had a situation a couple of years ago when they went after regional school transportation, and we pounced back on that. Steve was losing his hair over that one, and they backtracked on that and looked at the monies back again.
Just so that you know, one of the big things, obviously, is Chapter 70, the schools and local money to the cities and towns. He, the governor, cannot cut that. The only one that can do that is the legislature, the House and Senate, a vote after vote then. We have, there was an FY-10 law that passed that said, regional transportation, which is a big thing to a lot of districts, and make a lot of money, is, actually, helps the towns because it reduces your transportation cost, cannot be cut unless Chapter 70 is cut and only by the same percentage. The Patrick administration chose, he chose not to believe in that law. I mean, I don't know how they can do that, but we have a commitment from the Patrick administration to follow that law. We also have legal opinions and stuff, so you be prepared if we have to move on that. But again, we always watch that, what's going to happen.
Let me, I just want to add one thing relative to nine-C, that the governor's authority is limited to a territory where he can cut, but he can also request of the legislature to expand that nine-C authority, which has happened in the past. And, you know, the legislature has to make the decision to grant him that nine-C authority, to go beyond the scope of what's listed in nine-C. So he can come back and ask, but we still have a legislative, you know, obligation in that process in order to expand that authority.
Okay. I'll be quick, so we can get into unsure questions. But as was mentioned, and again, we do have some great partners here, so it's really nice to see everyone here. I did serve on the Foundation Budget Review Commission for fourteen long months. Many of you, I believe, submitted testimony and/or came down to several of our, we had public hearings throughout the state, and we did take that testimony very seriously, hours and hours and hours of documentation and testimony. And in the end, we really figured that we had to narrow down the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission to some key areas, because, you know, as we traveled around the state, we obviously heard some common themes. One of the ones that we had some recommendations on is the health insurance issue. That was the number one thing that all of our districts kept saying, you know, when you look at the foundation budget and how it allocates funds, it's grossly underfunding that section of the budget. The next thing that came along was specialized costs, looking at in-district costs, out-of-district costs, circuit breaker, but also the kids in between that don't qualify for circuit breaker. So we also have some more work to do on that area, but that was another area that we made some recommendations, as well as low-income students and ELL, second language learners, second language for English learners. We made a bunch of recommendations for them with the funding as well. The issue right now is, the report was completed and issued, and it amounts to well over a billion dollars worth of recommendations. And that's our dilemma right now. We knew that we were going to come up with a large number, we knew that we were underfunding, but now the problem becomes, how do we fund it? We agreed around the table that we were going to advocate for a phased-in approach, because we knew that there was just no way we were going to find a billion dollars in the budget. So right now, it's going to be up to the legislature in the next several years to determine how we're going to be able to address some of that, where we're going to find this money, and when we're going to be able to even start implementing that. You know, when we talk about the money, one of the things that we don't, sometimes we don't recognize is, even in this year's budget alone, we had to put $171 million of additional funding into the addiction issue, a very serious issue that has touched all of us. So when we start looking at, okay, we need a billion over here, we need $171 million over here, we needed $940 million for DCF. Because again, our school districts, you all know it, you live it, okay? You're dealing with children and families that have major issues, and if we don't support them over here, you know, you're seeing the impacts in the schools already, but we need more support, obviously, in those areas. And that's just two, you know, two areas that come to our offices and need help. So it isn't an easy task, you know that, you already get that. You know, $4.6 billion went into education funding this year, and I know it's not enough. We're not there yet. But I think we've tried every year to show our commitment to education with that funding, with the regional school transportation funding, with the Chapter 70, with the circuit breaker, and trying to give some more local aid so that the cities and towns also aren't fighting for the same exact resources with you with some increases that they were able to get this year. So I think they had about a, it was about a 4.3% increase in local aid this year. So as the argument or the discussion has gone for the past many years, the pie is only so big, and we're trying to figure out how to spend it and how to divvy it up amongst all these needs. With, again, the foundation budget, I know that there's going to be more discussion. I hope to be reappointed, obviously, to Ways and Means and the Education Committees. Chairwoman Peis and Chairwoman Chang Diaz work with us very closely to make some recommendations. And, you know, I'm sure that there will be something coming up in this legislative cycle. Not sure what it's going to look like yet, but I know this is on the front of our mind. I think that was about it for now. I'll maybe add whatever.
Sure. Sure. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. I've got kind of a unique role in the budget process because I'm a ranking member on the Ways and Means Committee. So I'm one of the six legislators that actually sits in on the conference committees for the annual operating budget that comes around, as well as the supplemental budgets that we do throughout the course of a legislative year. Those budgets that we put together in order to fill the holes as time progresses. Let me give you my thoughts, and these are only, you know, this is some speculation at this point, but given the governor's preparations to exercise nine-C authority in order to make up some of the bottom line of the budget, he's pulled back on that very significantly, while we're going to get a better idea of whether or not he's going to exercise that power, hopefully, within the next few weeks. At this point, I feel relatively confident that hopefully we can avoid that action. That's not a guarantee, but that's the way we are feeling up to this point. The way that they have actually shored up the deficit and the shortcomings in this operating budget that we're in right now is they've done it through agency efficiency. They haven't hired physicians that they have hoped to fill, they're basically eliminating them through attrition. They are cutting corners in their monthly budgets before they even get to that point of the expenditure that they're supposed to be, that they are appropriated and supposed to be making. So they're trying to use efficiency, and we're only a few months into the, into the general operating budget year. So so far, based upon the revenue numbers that we've seen in the last few months, a little bit higher than what our benchmarks had anticipated, and through those efficiencies, hopefully, we're going to be able to avoid the nine-C path. If the governor does open that nine-C door, again, his authority is limited. So a lot of those big-ticket areas that people are very, very concerned with, number one, he doesn't have the authority to go after. Number two, if he's going to have to exercise that nine-C power, he's going to use a scalpel, not a chainsaw. He's going to be very precision-like in order to meet a basic obligation financially, so that as we approach budget negotiations for the next year, which by the way, we're already formulating budgets right now. We're already getting ready to do that, those of us on the leadership team, and getting prepared for what we're going to see come January. When that consensus revenue hearing happens on December 5th, that's basically where we all get into a room and we say, okay, this is where we think the revenue picture of the Commonwealth is going to go. This is what we think is going to happen. Doesn't guarantee we're going to get this money, doesn't mean that it's going to stay at this number. It could go up, it could go down, but it's a projection, so that we can start building the foundation of a budget. And as time goes on, we adjust those revenue numbers. Month to month, if the revenue figures get better, if something extremely positive happens in the Commonwealth that wasn't anticipated, we factor that into the equation as time goes on. Something very bad could happen in the Commonwealth, which we had to adjust to as well. Representative Ferguson had just mentioned about the opiate crisis that we had to deal with, right? Hundred, over $170 million that we didn't anticipate we were going to have to spend in one standard fiscal year. All of a sudden, boom, it's taken off of the top of the budget, just like that. That's a big chunk of money to remove. When you talk about the money that we put in for additional spending for Chapter 70, you know, it doesn't even equate to that number, but boom, there it comes out of the budget. Our unfunded pension liability, depending upon what's happening in the markets, you know, we have to look at our funding schedule, and then all of a sudden, if that goes south, and depending upon what happens on the national level, we all know, we had a very contentious election, we could have an administration that has some very different ideas about what happens, that could impact the markets, it could impact the Commonwealth and how we invest our money. These are all things that we're going to slowly watch as the budget year progresses. The governor has the worst crack at this budget, as Senator Goby rightfully pointed out. The governor has to propose that budget first. He has absolutely the worst foundation to propose a budget, because he's doing it right at the beginning of the calendar year, and he doesn't have the projection and the benefit of those additional four months that pass by by the time the Senate gets it. So the governor has the worst picture, the House has a slightly better picture when we get to the budget, the Senate has the best version of what the finances are going to be. And if they're way up, they can make adjustments for that, and then we come together as a House and a Senate, we figure it out. If they're way down, though, the Senate's got a tough job as well. They have to figure out, where are we going to make up that shortfall? We've had a couple of very difficult budget cycles, and you've probably seen this with local officials and administrators within school systems, what we've had to do in order to adjust to make the budget work in the last two years. It has not been a rosy, wonderful picture. We had a shortfall as we were approaching the new gubernatorial administration, that we had to shore up, you know, I think it was in the neighborhood of close to $1 billion. As we went around the corner for the next budget year, we had the same problem happen. We had a deficit that we had to deal with. So on top of trying to plan the fiscal budget for the next year that's coming up, sometimes we have a deficit that we have to deal with in the existing budget that we are faced with in the here and the now. So let me say this, in terms of an agenda, I can't tell you today what I think is going to happen financially. I have a guess right now, but it's not something that I'm going to share in this room, because we don't know. Here's the target dates to look at. Consensus revenue on the 5th, the legislature's going to give you an idea of where we think things are going to go. The governor's already starting to build his budget now, so we're going to get that recommendation in sometime in February from the governor. And in the meantime, obviously, the thing that's going to happen that's probably very key to us as legislators is we start a new session in January. So we're going to be drafting new legislation, filing bills, and trying to tee up support for initiatives that we hope we can pass in the course of the two-year legislative session cycle. And that's what I'm most concerned with, hearing from you as local officials, for the simple fact that the legislation is the thing that, you know, sometimes can be the most challenging, just by the nature of the process. The budgeting is the budget. We always know the schedule of the budget and whereabouts it's going to fall into us, and we'll be playing with the numbers. But the legislative piece, the law piece, that we actually have to come up with a proposal that may change things, that's something that I'm extremely interested in, and I know all my colleagues are, because of the process that it takes in order to get there. And finally, with respect to the good work of the Budget Review Commission, they work extremely hard to go across this Commonwealth and listen to all aspects, right? Not every... Not everybody was on the same page with what those recommendations are, they had to try and reconcile those with recommendations. But the bottom line of that number was over a billion dollars. So the question becomes, we have a pie, we all hear this example, we have a pie, we have to divvy up that pie. By the time you move out those fixed costs, by the time you figure out where you're going to prioritize that money, that wedge that we have to deal with as a legislature is extremely small, smaller than probably any of you can imagine. And, you know, the relationship that you have with your local municipal budgets, when you break out those fixed costs, you know, your unfunded pension liability, your healthcare, you know, those are the challenges that we face. And I respect the fact, I know your budgets are shrinking, so are the budgets on the state level. Somebody asked me a couple of weeks ago when I was at a meeting, they said, well, you know, and not schools, but another area which I won't mention, they said, you know, our budget hasn't grown, you've gone after our budget, it hasn't grown with the inflation and the additional money that's been taken into the Commonwealth in the last 10 years. And I said, you're absolutely right. But the reason that hasn't happened is because we are paying more in health insurance than we ever have in this Commonwealth. If you look at the liability we have today, 10 years ago, it wasn't even close. So now we're taking a bigger chunk out of that pie just to pay for health insurance, right? Our unfunded pension liability and the funding schedule we have, we've extended it now to 2040 or 2050, just to pay the pension liability that we have for employees that are in the system for the state today in order to free up money in the bottom line of the budget. The opiate crisis that's come around the corner, hundreds of millions of dollars that we've thrown into the budget that we didn't even have on the radar screen, that we weren't even thinking about, that is now taken right off the top of the budget in the bottom line of it. Very, very difficult things to deal with. Not to mention the fact that all of those unintended consequences of things that happen in the Commonwealth that we have to pay for. So, you know, we get some tough times, I want to hear those suggestions. I think that more so, we are here tonight to listen to what those suggestions are and unify as a legislative delegation to figure out where we can go. This list of unfunded mandates, extremely helpful, and I'd like to think that what's happened with the Budget Review Commission, we can work to incorporate some of that into our budget recommendations this year. That's what I'm hoping for, and that's what I'm going to pitch to the chairman and to the members of the Ways and Means Committee, that you did all this good work, but all that is right now is a report that's sitting on a shelf. If we don't try and incorporate some of those changes, we're not going to make any progress in order to shore up that funding formula. And that funding formula has challenges. There are some people in this Commonwealth and school systems that benefit greatly from the way the Chapter 70 formula is today, and they love it and they don't want to see any changes to it. And there are many others that want to see massive changes to it because they don't benefit with the way it's structured. And therein lies another challenge. In the legislature, not necessarily every legislator is on the same page in terms of what those changes should be. And I think Kim can attest to this, she sat in those hearings for over a year, the senator can attest to this, you know, as the chairs of the caucus. When we sit in a room statewide with people from school committees and administrations, sometimes we hear exactly the opposite points of an argument. Hey, state reps and senators, you should be doing A, when over here, they're telling us, no, 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 you should be doing B. They have dueling legislation, they have dueling recommendations for budget changes. So it would be most helpful to try and rally around those which we think will, at least in some way, shape, or form, try and help everybody and lift the same boat. And that's some of the challenges that we're dealing with. So I'm interested to hear your questions and some more of your concerns.
Representative Ferguson, you need to talk about other than the...
Yeah, no, that was one of my biggest surprises when I got down there. So one of the issues I come from, I was a selectman for a year, so I see a lot of selection funding, so I was on the other side. One of the biggest issues for us, and I know most in my town now, were the out-of-district vocational stuff. Because in Spencer, I think we're paying now two, over 200,000 for five kids. And that's three cops, or more highway guys, or another road getting paid. So and everybody I talked to, I know Anne files up on this as well, that this is a great idea, you know, it's just unfair to do this, especially to these small towns, and O-Cam has a few. So you go down there with this great idea, we should file this, and it's dead before it goes anywhere. It's just, and Todd's right, not everybody agrees. Certain areas like ours that agree on issues like that, and there's others that don't. The selectman part, you know, in the financial crisis of 2009. So we, what we did, and in my town, and this has an unfortunate result that I'm sure everybody is aware of, that the town worked really hard, and all our employees, we kept everybody, some got their hours cut, but they all went to 60/40 on their insurance, so everybody could keep their jobs, we could still give the school the money they needed, and everybody was happy. Well, a couple of years down the road, when they didn't get their hours back, now they're mad at the school because they're still 80/20 on their insurance, and it does the, and every year, you know, you sit down for budget time, and everybody says, we're going to work together, and that lasts about two weeks, and it's like this, and it's all over money. So as Todd said, I'd love to hear your suggestions, this is very helpful, we thank you, and love to hear from Desi on some of the stuff, too. Please.
Do you want to try a little bit of help to get the demographic and stuff in there?
Sure. Thank you for inviting me to sit on the panel. The district enrollment information that you have, our staff put together at CMRPC, and unfortunately, as you can clearly see, Quavon is not alone, many of you are not alone. Throughout our region, we go out towards the boroughs, we're up in the Tohantso region, and also definitely, other than Hubbardston, the Quavon Regional School District. But all of our communities are suffering, especially west of Worcester, the Wachusett region, with the exception of Rutland, with declining enrollments. And what do you do with the declining enrollments? What do you do with the facilities that are half-filled? Some of them paid for, as was mentioned earlier, some are not. What could possibly be used for municipal reuse? Some of you belong to CMRPC, some of you do not. We have the capacity and the capabilities to do any type of studies, to gather this information. It took a staff member about two hours to get all of this information from the DEFC website, there's tons of information out there. Reach out to your RPA if you're looking for information. In the past, we've been awarded district local technical assistance funding, which is commonly known as CLTA. We've done quite a few studies with that, we also work on regionalization and regional type projects. We've done joint procurement, we have a great program going right now. A few school superintendents that I've talked to have actually talked to us about doing a busing contract. Even if three surrounding communities were to get together to go out for a bid for a busing contract, even though there should be no collusion and whatnot, but there are some that may bow out to others because they're located in your community, that may not happen if you join together with a few of your surrounding communities. We're more than happy to work with any school district, any public school system, or any community on any type of potential shared services, or regionalization type procurement, or anything else that you may come up with for ideas. Very open, willing to help out, to improve the quality of life for those that live and work in the region, that's our mission, and it's right down to the floor of education.
Did you have any comments that you would like to discuss about Senator Clinton, or would you just like to bring back information?
Bring back information to the senator, I mean, I could speak opiate crisis information if needed off the top, but I mean, I know we've heard from a lot of our schools in general, throughout our district, that have their own challenges, health insurance, the money's going to charter schools, and going to the regional vocational schools. I know the senator's been pushed for legislation, but a lot of pushback was the drug testing in schools. Well, people had assumed that it would be an actual drug test, it's just the conversational piece. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to set that, but I know the senator really just kind of wanted us to put in depth of some information as to what the needs are, so we should get ready for legislation.
Thank you. I know that these people have a lot of great information, and you probably have a lot of good questions. One thing I would tell you, when you talk about the drug testing at school, which would take our nurses and other people to do another thing with an unfunded mandate, absolutely necessary that we do it, but again, we don't have the personnel to do it. The question that I've had from a number of school districts out in this area, Anne, and you're very familiar with it, is state land. Most of our school, a good number of acreages of the Quavon District, and certainly probably the Wachusett District, yeah, landlocked with all kinds of stuff taking care of the water going to Boston. We're happy to do it. But the pilot money that we get is adjusted for inflation, they tell me, the same thing we got in 1942. So maybe there could be some look-see there. We worry about the marijuana legislation. You guys helped make good decisions on this because, are you going to leave it in the bailiwick where it's like a real criminal offense, or are you going to kick it over to where we deal with alcohol so that we can work with students who'll be bringing gummy bears that we will have to, you know, analyze? But I'd like to open it up to everybody who's in here, I know that a number of folks probably have specific questions, maybe for Desi, or regional planning, or our senators, our representatives, they're here tonight, you've got a chance at them. Amazingly, there's a similar meeting happening in the southern Worcester County area. And we have the capacity at about 7:00 to Skype in with them. We may or may not do that, depending on where the audience is and what questions you have, because we like to accommodate the questions that people have here. So I'd open it up, and I'll just point, and you can ask whatever you would like from, hopefully you'll get some good answers. Yes?
I have a follow-up.
Now, you can go out and stand up and just identify, like, if you're a selectman, or parents, or...
So my name's Jessica Geary, and I'm a parent of two children in the heart in the Quavon District, one at Harvick Elementary and one at Quavon as seventh grader. My question is for Mr. Smolow, as a follow-up to what you were saying about the foundations budget and the formula calculations. For most of the people here, or many of the people here, and I think I know a lot of the parents who are interested but yet don't know the language, don't understand everything that's going on, could you just speak a little bit to the things that would benefit another district? What kind of, what aspects of the formula calculation would benefit another district that would not benefit us? So just, so will we, you know, understand, I know that there's something to do with, like, maybe 8% that has to go to a district whether they need it or not, something like that, in some of the more, the wealthier areas?
I think you're talking about the Foundation Study Committee, or are you talking about just the foundation formulas that currently exist with Chapter 70?
Yes.
Okay, the latter, the latter is, I think you probably, I don't know if the...
I mean, I'll just, I'll defer to Rep. Ferguson on this and Senator Gobi. They were part of the Foundation Budget Commission review, which looked at this. I will say this, there's probably about four people in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that understand the Chapter 70 formula, and that's no kidding. If you laid the Chapter 70 formula out, it'd probably run the length of this room, because it's been adjusted and amended over time. I don't know a legislator that knows the Chapter 70 formula from soup to nuts. So over time, they've adjusted to do things in order to ebb and flow with what has happened with education, with, to react to populations, to react to, you know, city atmospheres, kids that are no child left behind, there's all kinds of adjustments that were made over time. Regional school transportation, just as an example, so if you want to talk to the good schools here that are part of regional school districts and schools that are stand-alongs, right? Everybody that sees the funding for regional school transportation that benefits from it financially in a local municipality loves to get it, right? Those legislators that don't have regional schools in their district, that don't get a dime in their school district, don't care about it. So when you want to talk about regional school transportation, and funding, by the way, that Senator Gobi helped to lead the charge on in order to get it up this year, but the idea of regional school transportation money, the incentive in order to get you to regionalize was that we were going to pay for your transportation, right? That was the idea when the state first introduced it. Regionalize your school district, we'll get your kids there, we'll pay for it. State's never done that once, ever since that formula was implemented. We've done better with the contribution over time, and have done very well over the course of this budget year, but we've never fully paid for it. So the very well-intentioned idea of convincing municipalities to regionalize their school districts unfortunately did not work the way it ended up being, or what it is right now. So, you know, there's probably a million different examples that nip and tuck at different areas of that formula, and everybody wants to get the bottom line increased. An example is, when they came out with the news that they were going to increase the contribution by $50 per pupil, right? Everybody got up and cheered. Fantastic, an additional $50 per pupil, uh-uh. How many people didn't get another dime from that $50 increase? I guarantee you, there's probably quite a few of you in this room, in your school districts, if you looked at the number, that didn't. But what that really translated to was that if you did not get up to that $50 minimum contribution of an increase, some school systems were already there, the ones that weren't, that's the number that elevated people up to the $50. So you see, when we play around with these things, it doesn't necessarily mean the same thing to everybody there. It also depends on the contribution from your local municipality, right? You know, is your local municipality increasing their base up to the 2.5% as allowed by law? Some municipalities don't do that, right? So therein can lie some of the challenge. When you don't have, when, we depended on Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 money to come from a primary area of funding, specifically local aid that came from the lottery fund. So when the lottery in Massachusetts was dumb and happy and doing great, what did municipalities do for years, right? They decided to pull back on the local contribution that they made, and they relied on the contribution that came from the state. They were not increasing the bottom line of a local contribution that was commensurate with the aid that was coming in from the state. Well, as more fees came on board, as you had to expend more money on different things, as the state contribution that pretty much stayed the same but didn't change started to move around the bend, all of a sudden municipalities realized, oh my God, guys, you aren't giving us enough money. Those municipalities that were keeping a local contribution to stay with what was coming from the state have fared very well over time. Those towns that depended only on the state aid that was coming through have struggled over time. So that's, you know, there lies some of the problem with the contribution formula, and, you know, I would say to your municipalities, you know, some people have asked me about raising the 2.5 levy limit, we've had this discussion, I think we had it then...
Yes, we have.
We've had this discussion about, well, you know what, if you guys just raise the 2.5 levy limit by law, you know, let us figure that out, right? So we can raise the local contribution, we can raise it through taxation locally. That's easier said than done, right? I mean, you know, everybody says, why don't you guys just raise taxes and throw money into the bottom line of the budget, and everything will be great. You know, there's not a taste in the Commonwealth for a tax increase. And, you know, even to the point where when people wanted to roll back the income tax in Massachusetts, when they did it at the ballot, what did the legislature do? We said, uh-uh, we're not going to listen to that, we're not going to do it. So, you know, the electorate out there gives us one signal, we get another signal from another area, and our responsibility is to try and balance those two things out, which are not necessarily the easiest things to do in the world, we've got to kind of end up someplace in the middle. And that's a little bit challenging. But Kim, if you want to talk about specifics on the Chapter 70, this is your area.
Yeah, I'll just, the representative did a great job with it. But what I was going to add to that is, he started to get into a little bit with the target share, and what each community is expected to pay, and the formula, how they calculate that, and I think we all are familiar with, you know, the municipalities and the contributions that we make versus what the state makes. So when you look at the target of, you know, the minimum was supposed to be 17.5%, all the way up to 82.5%, and all of our communities kind of fall in between. If you put it on a scatter plot, you'd see, you know, a city may be way up here, but the town Princeton may be way down here, and that's based on the aggregate wealth model and the calculation of the contribution. And the issue becomes, once some of us start looking at that and talking about tweaking that, which it would be great for, especially some of our regional school districts, you get a lot of pushback from the districts that are doing very well based on the current formula. So when I go to talk to my colleagues, and we've done this, you know, and I'll say, oh, you know, we really need to do something, let me tell you about my towns in the, you know, the Ash West District, or let me tell you what's going on in the Wachusett District, and I'll explain it, and they understand where I'm coming from, but they'll say, well, you know, if it comes down to a vote, I can't support that if it's going to take money away from my district. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do and trying to convince people that, okay, if we tweak the actual formula itself, that they're going to be held harmless, which I don't know how we do that. So it's, you know, it's very difficult to try and convince people that you want to tweak a formula that they're benefiting from and doing very well with, where others of us are not. And, you know, I've heard time and time again that a large majority, not a supermajority, but a large majority of the districts within the Commonwealth are doing well under the current formula, and so they don't want to change it. So we have to really look at that and figure out how we can get that accomplished. If that helps.
Other questions?
Hi, Don.
Mark?
Thank you. Mark Broke, Quavon, Massachusetts. And I have a few points I'd like to ask and bring to your attention, and I know that people in this room would...
Could you talk mildly...
Not a lot, you know me, I can do it, I can do it. I want to talk about something called encouragement, maybe a understanding of looking at encouragement. We really are, in central Massachusetts, along with the western part of the state, we understand the foundation formula and the work that has to be done here. Where we are at in central Massachusetts... We really are, in central Massachusetts, along with the western part of the state, we understand about the foundation formula and the work that has to be done there. Where we are at, being in central Massachusetts, part of the Commonwealth, we really are at shared services, looking at shared services. We're looking at solidations, consolidation of schools, closing of schools. And what to do with those buildings. And one thing that we can look at is possible training centers, and various vocational. That is happening, that's going to be the push the next five, eight years anyway. Is there some relief in the way we use buildings? I don't know, and things like that. Also, shared with the even town buildings, helping utilize and still be able to maintain the cost of schools. So I'm looking toward an encouragement of something like that. Thirdly, something about the Maryland model, consolidation of districts. There is something called, and looking at in central Mass and western Mass, using maybe county governments, and we got a little off key 30 years, 20 years ago, the county government. But we need to look at that kind of a model and perspective. And again, encouragements. And I might use, maybe use the Collins Center, maybe use regional planning centers to help us with that, to really make the encouragement to do that. Because that's how we're going to be able to run these school districts with a declining enrollment. So there are opportunities. And when you said representative of great appetite, no appetite for taxes. Nobody is an appetite for taxes. However, we live in a Commonwealth, and a democratic society that we believe in. Education needs to be funded appropriately, or we will continue to lose this fight. And based on that, there is an equity when it comes to the technology piece. I'm not a person that knows the finances and pieces like that. I've learned a lot being 10 years on the committee. But why can't there be some type of enhancements again in regards to telecommun, um, technologies? A bond, I don't know those particular things, a bond throughout the whole state to upgrade stuff. That comes off the top. Also, we did it for 30, 50 years. We ran telephone lines, poles, everywhere from Montana to Seattle to the bayous of Florida. And we encouraged that to get, what, a telephone line? This has to happen in technology. I honestly believe Senator Brewer, previously, when we did that, we already have done the model, and some districts started doing it as well.